This meeting of Marion County Board of Education is now called to order. Let's be standing for our place allegiance and remain standing for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight is the adoption of the agenda which includes communications, student learning services, student support services, student learning and support and consent items, hearing of delegations.
I'll move to adopt the agenda. A second.
All in paper.
Aye.
At this time we will have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Reverend Pinkston. The first item on our superintendent's report is, as always, we always look at our goals which are all students will graduate college and career-ready, students are going to be on math and reading level, and known office. With our umbrella being leadership, one of the first things I wanted to do tonight was actually introduce some new central office folks that we have here in the office. I'll start. On the front row here, we have, if you'll stand for just a minute.
Sure.
This is Ms. Tracy Sharp. She will be, being, a new word we're going to use is exceptional child education, which was formerly called our Director of Special Education. She comes to us from Taylor County. She was the director there for seven years. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, ma'am.
She is, you know, would you like to just say a few words?
Sure, sure. Just excited to be here, excited to be in Marion County. Like she said, my name is Tracy Sharp and I have been in Taylor County for the past seven years working as their Director of Exceptional Child Education. One of my favorite things to do is to work with parents and community members and individuals to discuss students' needs and how we can best work together to best meet those needs. I do have a vested interest here. I have deep roots in Marion County. I went to school here in the first grade. I have family here. I attended Lebanon Elementary as a child and was very proud of that. So I feel as though I'm coming home. The funny part for me is a lot of people remember me as a child much more than I know them because they're a little bit older. But we won't talk about it at this point in time. But that is, it's been good. And I'm excited about working together with everyone to help our students' dreams come true. You know, oftentimes there's a belief that a student may have a disability or weakness in an area and maybe that's a limiting factor. But I'll share with you tonight that we're going to work together to help all of our students' dreams come true, including those with an IP or a disability in one area. Because what we all know is working together, we can see that our students' strengths are way in the area of weakness that they have. So I look forward to working with you all. I look forward to hearing from you. I'll share that my door will be open. I'll look forward to meeting you and talking with you because that's the best way I'm going to get the pulse on what we need to do to best meet the needs of our students. So I look forward to working with you. Thank you, Ms. Sharp.
Also, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chloe Binningfield. I think he is a native of Marion County as well and he's going to be working with our, he's going to be working as an instructional supervisor and also working as food service. Mr. Binningfield?
I am indeed a proud graduate of Marion County Schools and so excited to be home after all these years. I so appreciate the homecoming that I've received thus far. It's nice to be a part of this team. There's a great vision and mission for this district and I know that, as Tracy said, when we all work together, the great district can get even better. And I'm excited to be part of that. Looking forward to getting to know everybody and being part of this community again. Thank you.
Welcome to Marion County.
We also have another relation that is Ms. Jennifer Osner. She will be working with us in human resources. I think she has some roots in Marion County as well. I'll let her introduce you.
I do. I'm from here. I'm here at Split Pier still. I have a little brother who is coming back probably next summer to be a dentist here in town. Went to St. A, graduated from Marion County here and then the University of Louisville. Currently live in Barstown. I'm excited to be back home. I bring about 12 to 13 years of HR experience and I'm very excited to be here. So I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. And so with the announcement of the news, I'd also like to move on into our teaching and learning. And just as we're talking about staff, one of the things you do as a first-year superintendent is you complete lots of classes and go through lots of evaluations through that process. And I did complete that this summer, so I wanted to let the board know that I had completed that, received that diploma. Talking about leadership, I wanted to mention the fact that Ms. Preston, as well as Mr. Cecil, will be attending the KSBA Summer Leadership Institute. That's an opportunity for board members to also receive professional growth opportunities as our staff does as well because it's all important that we grow. One of the things that we did today, and I'm not sure if the posters are still hanging.
I'm sorry, I took them down. I didn't know if any.
That's okay. But today we actually had our first meeting where we actually brought in our instructional supervisors for the year. And we did that in conjunction with the principals and the assistant principals. Ms. Newcomb led that. And what we did there was we just started that process to make sure that that's going to be an opportunity for our instructional coaches along with our principals to support our staff in the classroom. Because, you know, as Maxwell says, you know, it's very important for us each and every day to add value to everyone. And it's an opportunity for all of us to do that and support what's going on in the classrooms. Tomorrow, we're actually going to have an opportunity to have one of our former teachers come back and help our instructional coaches, Sally Thompson. For those of you that remember, Sally Thompson was at the high school. She did a great job. She was a wonderful math teacher. And she's actually, we have her on loan right now with the State Department and she's actually working with some of the very tough high schools in Jefferson County. And she agreed to come in and actually help our instructional coaches because that's what she does. So it's really nice to have that opportunity for her to come in and help us. And that's an opportunity for our instructional staff and our principals. Lots of professional growth opportunities this time of the year because it's very important that as the adults, we get everything we can get and grow professionally so that our kids get what they need. We have our KASA, Kentucky Association of School Administrators Conference coming up next week. And as a part of that, on Wednesday, we're actually going to have a retreat where our central office staff and our principals come together and grow and work on some things that's very specific to our district. And then throughout the conference, then that gives everyone an opportunity to meet other folks across the state who maybe, they may maybe do some same things that we do and it's a good way to network and get ideas and if something comes up, that's great. We're going to continue and you're going to hear me, Ms. Newcomb, some other staff talk about the Professional Growth and Effectiveness System. And I know we've been talking about that for several years now. This year, it's here, we're going to be doing that. Thankfully, GREC is offering another opportunity and GREC is an acronym because, you know, education has a thousand acronyms, but it's Green River Educational Co-op. And we're going to have an opportunity to actually go there and actually have, talk about Professional Growth and Effectiveness System. So we're excited about that. The principals will be attending that. Lots of professional growth opportunities for our staff. Each of these schools have actually worked well with our central office staff to actually plan activities for our teacher. Some of those, you know, is specific to a grade level, some is specific to a school. But what we've done is we've tried to look at what do teachers need and what do teachers want so that they can be prepared for the 2014-15 school year. Very good news item. I was informed yesterday, as you all know, Marion County has a very high rate of national board-certified teachers, one of the highest rates in the state. And when I found out yesterday, I was excited to find out that Ellen McCall from St. Charles and Sarah Martin have been asked to be trainers for that program. So they're asking that we're going to recruit in Marion County and they're going to be able to provide that. So they're going to be getting some additional professional growth opportunities and then they're going to be recruiting other people to be a national board-certified teacher. And what that does is instead of a teacher getting their master's, say, in principalship, what happens is they can get their master's or their rank one so that they become a better teacher for those teachers who want to stay in the classroom and work for kids. So it's a wonderful opportunity for all of our teachers and that we have actually two teachers that's been picked up to do that. Another thing that I wanted to talk to the board about was our 21st Century Program. If you'll remember, at the last board meeting, I talked about the fact that the 21st Century did not receive the grant funding. And I talked to Mr. Binningfield and he said the same thing was happening in Taylor County. A lot of the centers for 21st Century were not getting that funding. And if you'll remember, I think Mr. Spalding spoke about that, as well as Ms. Evans, at the last board meeting about the fact that, you know, we do have funding through September, but we would have to rewrite the grant. The last time, the board funded the money for the 21st Century Program and then we rewrote the grant and we secured that. So, you know, what I need to hear from the board and we need to be thinking about is, are we going to fund the remainder of the school year? I mean, that's just something that we need to talk about and for that 21st Century Program. If you'll remember, it serves Lebanon Middle.
How much is that?
It would probably be about $40,000. We received funding through September, so that's going to give us an opportunity to have the 21st Century available through September. So for those children who actually go to the 21st Century Program, which is located downtown, children from Glasscock, children from Lebanon Elementary and the middle school program here in town, that's an after-school program for them.
Could you explain just a little bit what the 21st Century Program is?
Well, they go there after school and what happens is they do core content activities. They help them with their homework. They also do some physical activities. Sometimes they may do some enrichment activities. They have a really nice playground and they're also provided a set. So it's a really good opportunity for those kids who may not have, you know, homework help is, I know that's an issue. I know math is always an issue for all of us. So that's an opportunity for them. And Ms. Amanda, I remember, I introduced her. One of the things that she does, I think she goes above and beyond, she actually works with the classroom teachers of the children who go to 21st Century. So if there's a child that needs help in a specific area, she makes sure that that child, when they arrive, those two days after school, they get that help and that extra support. Because, you know, when we say, you know, when we look down at our banisters and we want to say that by the third grade, every child will be on math and reading level. The sooner we provide those interventions, the more than likely that's going to happen. And then every year that they're on grade level, then what we're going to have is we're going to have kids graduating and they're going to have those skills and abilities. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to say that 21st Century is the only program that we have that's doing that. We have a lot of good programs and our board is very good and supportive about supporting our extended school service programs at the school. But that's just one of those things that we need to talk about. So, you know, I just, I just want you all to think about that.
When do we need to make the decision?
I would say by the August board meeting.
By this week?
Yep. Because right now, we have staff employed until the end of September. So I just wanted to keep that on your mind. And, you know, we can, Mr. Lyons is our supervisor for Frisky, so that's one of the things that he could look at, you know, how that works together. And then 21st Century, Mr. Binningfield and I know Mr. Farmer will be helpful in that because that's instructional supervision and also goes along with Title I. So we can look to see what some other programs are doing. The nice part about being a member of GREC, they actually have folks that help you write grades. And so with our green reduced lunch rate at where it is right now, you know, if we can get that funding back in place, that would be a great thing for kids. Again, that's all about teaching, learning, supporting those kids. Under high expectations, one of the items I have is intentional planning. You know, we ask teachers every day to do lesson plans, but one of the things we have to do as the leaders is also intentionally plan. And when I say that, that starts with myself, that starts with the board, and it also starts with the principals. So just like last year, one of the things we will do is we will actually start talking about what do we want to accomplish the first 30 days of school, the next 60 days of school, and the next 90 days of school. You know, we want to model what we expect from teachers. And so intentionally planning and goal setting is something we need to do. We need to monitor that as board. We need to monitor that as supervisors and support teachers in the classroom. Professional Growth and Effectiveness System, again, I said you're going to hear me talk about that. That does not just affect teachers. The new Effectiveness System is also for teachers, it's for principals, and it's for the superintendent. So this is part of the No Child Left Behind waiver. It's one of those things that all across the state of Kentucky is new. And it's about, it's about a way to make our systems more effective. Exceptional Child Education, one of the things I just wanted to say is, you know, when Ms. Sharp came to me and she was the person selected, one of the things that she talked about to me is she said, "Do you have a mind, do you mind if we move from saying special education to exceptional child education?" And, you know, absolutely not. You know, we want, we want, like she said, we want every child to have the opportunity to have and make dreams come true. So I felt like that was a positive. That's a way of growing and moving forward and I was perfectly excited about that. The Alternative School, Mr. Lyons and I are going to be looking at our Alternative School Program and we're going to visit some places so that we can make sure that that is a program where children are making their dreams come true as well. So he's already talked to some folks and we're going to set up some visits and just want you to know that that's probably something that we're going to be talking about at the board meeting as well. We had 10 students, Mr. Lyons, graduate back in May?
Eight, I think.
Eight, okay. So not a large number, but we didn't have a large enrollment either. And that's not, that's not necessarily where all of our kids graduate, but for kids we do graduate, we want them to also be career-ready as well. So we want to look to see what some other folks around the district are doing as well. Strategic planning process. As you can remember, as we talk about this, our big dreams, Ready, Set, Grow, preschool for all, student leadership, graduate all career-ready and one-to-one technology, market, connect, and communicate. Some of the things that we've done, just as an update on that, because that's one of those things that we've got to keep out front all the time. One of the things, we've assigned those big dreams to administrators here in the office so everyone basically is assigned to that to make things happen. One of the things we've talked about the most is preschool for all. And we've decided, we've set a goal, by August, we're going to decide how can we know who would send their child to preschool if they did not qualify under the certain guidelines? So we've got to get that information out. So, you know, our, right now, we have five preschool rooms, okay? And we have the facilities for that. So if we have five preschool rooms, let's say we have 100 children, do we have 100 more children that actually want to go to preschool? But we've got to get that information because in my opinion, you know, by November, around that time, we've got to know for financial purposes, because, and you know, Ms. Caldwell and I are working on that piece of it, or the physical space, Mr. Spalding and I are looking at that. But, you know, it's going to take a lot of people coming together. Ms. Sharp, you know, a lot of, it's going to take a lot of people. We've got to get that committee together and we've got to look at, you know, how can we find out who are the parents that want to send their children to Marion County for a preschool program? So, you know, that's one of the things. We've got our book initiative, student leadership. Mr. Binningfield's come to me with an ideal of maybe some student ambassadors. We're excited about that. Career-ready, that's ongoing. I'll be excited to see what those numbers look like. And we've already talked about, we've increased that rate from last year. One-to-one technology. Tim understands that right now, a lot of districts are doing, they're putting things in kids' hands. Our question is, is how many kids already have things in their hand? And so we're going to have to look at that and that's not so much about a device, but, you know, what are we going to do to help support staff to know how to use the technology that's in their hand? Then obviously, the market connect and communicate, you know, we have to educate ourselves, our families, our community about what it is that we're going to do. I mean, that's going to always be an ongoing, from our website to, I know Ms. Sharp mentioned doing parent surveys, anonymous parent surveys where they send things out and how they feel about those kinds of things. So we will keep, keep you in the loop on that. We are going to get our committee started up and going. We should start that here, I would say in office, we should have that up and running. Another item that some community members has brought to myself and some of the board members is drug testing for staff. And so I just wanted to mention that. And what, what they have said is, you know, we're doing drug testing at the high school and that is one of those things where we want it to be that children say no to drugs because there's a possibility that they could be drug tested. And we want to see that as a preventative measure. But, you know, I have had people say to me, "Well, if you're going to drug test children, you know, I think you should drug test staff." And so what I've said is, I do not disagree with that. There's just a lot of things that do go along with that. So what I would like to recommend to the board is that we form a committee to look at what does staff drug testing look like? I know that in Barstown and in Nelson County, they do, they do staff drug testing. And I think they all, you know, they have some folks that do that. I've talked to the board attorney and I said, you know, I just think it's one of those things that we need to look at if our children are being drug tested. Is that something that we want to do with the staff? So, you know, my recommendation would be to form a committee, make that, you know, have parents, staff members, community members, board members, principal. I know Ms. Mann said she volunteered to be on that. I think, you know, I can't imagine that a board member would like to be a part of that. And obviously, we need to see what other districts do. You know, that's not something that I've explored a lot, but if that's something that we want to move forward with, I think we have to, we have to get a committee going and have lots of people's opinions, not just one person's opinion, so.
I would be willing to be on the committee. So when it gets to that point, I don't know how you foresee the committee working, but I would think after a period of time, we, you know, the committee would report to the board and to public.
Right. And make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation, right.
So I think that's one of those things we need, we need to explore. That's one of the things the community's interested in and we've got to look at that and talk about it. Thank you. Coaches meeting, I know one of the things that's getting ready to gear up is our dead period for the athletic, athletes is getting ready to end. And so one of the things that Mr. Peterson's doing as our district athletic director is he has a coaches meeting planned. He's been working very closely with Ms. Caldwell, myself, and Jan Brady to look at, you know, what are all the things and also the Kentucky High School Athletic Association. So he's working to make sure that all of our coaches understand what the requirements are. Heat index, very important right now. You have kids out in the heat. The heat index must be monitored. You've got to make sure that kids are safe. That's our first number-one priority. So just some of those kinds of things. And then the next item which goes along with that is red book training. Ms. Caldwell's contacted Ron Flannery and she's working on a full-day training for red book for all of the staff that would go along with that, which would be our bookkeepers, our principals. And then also, we would have a session where we would actually bring in our PTO, our coaches, any kind of booster club where they would understand what does the red book law say that we are allowed to do or not do with money? Yes, sir.
Is there a possibility that the board also could go through that training?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
Yes. I just, and that goes along with the coaches meeting, you know, there's, they've got to know. And Mr. Peterson's going to meet with them on Monday. That's when everything gets geared back up. And so in the meantime, the good part is, is Mr. Peterson and Jan Brady, who helps him at the high school, has a really good working relationship with myself and Ms. Caldwell. So we just keep talking and making sure. And, you know, if we don't know, we're going to ask Mr. Flannery, who is the person that actually oversees the red book. So we're okay with that process and I would assume the board is happy with that process as well. You know, if you don't know, you ask.
Think it would be a good idea of all the board or just one member?
I'll leave that up to you all.
I would think all the board, but that's just my opinion. Well, that's, I agree with you. I mean, when we're presented with finances or especially, well, anything pertaining to finance, we ought to, we ought to understand it. The whole board should understand. I, but that's just my opinion. I agree with you. That's fine with me.
Because one of the things that-
And hopefully that's something to do with the budget. If we understand the budget, because I'm not so sure that we quite understand the budget. So hopefully, something in that area too.
Well, the red book is going to change because the money in the past had stayed at the school level. Now, there's going to be some, some things that actually go into the school level that's actually going to come up to the central office. Am I correct, Ms. Caldwell? So it's going to be something, now the schools are still going to have discretion over how that money's going to be used, but it's going to be housed here and it's going to be through Munis. And so, you know, if there's any questions about that, you know, the more we know, the easier it is to understand. And then when folks ask us out in the community, why is this done? If there's picture money, why does the picture money go to the board office? Why does the board office, are they the ones that are writing that check? And then we can explain that process because that's, that's the most important thing is that we know and if we don't know, we find out in the follow-up. And on, just to end with communication, as you all know, school starts for children on August the 6th. That's 20 weekdays until kids go back to school. So we're excited about that. Staff report back to work on August the 4th, which is 18 days, 18 workdays. I'm not counting weekends. And then we have again 174 days of instruction for students and 177 days for teachers and staff. So, you know, that's when you look and you say, "We have to make every minute count for every child." So excited about that. Look forward to seeing the back-to-school letters in the newspaper in the next couple of weeks. They always do a back-to-school section. Sent out an email a couple of weeks ago about our bonding potential. As you all know, we've been talking about that quite a bit. Marion County does not have the extra nickel like some surrounding districts around us. And if you'll notice, some surrounding districts around us are building new schools and we're not. We've actually got some schools that just need some things like HVAC and a new roof. A lot of people can't see that, but you need it. If the HVAC goes out the first week in August, I can assure you that that's going to be an issue. If your child comes home wet, that's going to be an issue. And those are some of the things that we're going to have to address. And just that loan could be $2 or $3 million. So thankfully, our bonding potential has gone up. We are saving some of our capital outlay money. So we're looking at an increase from about $3 million to about $5 million. So, you know, and obviously, we've not spent anything. We've not used any bonding potential that we have. So we're going to work on that. And our district's facility planning will begin this year. Mr. Spalding will be helping me with that. And that, that's a process where we'll actually have several folks on a committee that will work together to determine the needs of the buildings in Marion County. I can assure you, we're going to have more needs than we have money. But, you know, that's, we have to have a goal. We have to know where, where is it that we want to be with facilities in the next five, 10, 20 years? Because when we're gone, our children and our grandchildren will be using these buildings. Building and maintenance summer work. You can tell Scott, you know, the winters are tough because we're making a decision about whether to call school on or off, but when you miss the number of days we have, you have a very short summer. So that means all your building and maintenance needs are also compacted into about eight weeks. So, you know, he worked very closely with each principal to determine what the needs were. And so then what he's been doing is trying to make those needs come true. And we're working on that. I have no doubt that we'll have all those things in place. One of the items on the agenda tonight is about a room change in the ATC. We do have an architect here with us tonight, Mr. Ward. And we're going to be talking about, again, making the best use of the current facilities we have and talking about moving our carpentry room in with our industrial maintenance room. And so as you all know, when you, when you get into that process and you're dealing with that, that amount of electricity and equipment changes, KD is going to tell you, you've got to look at having some pieces of paper in place. So thankfully, we've got an architect on board for that. We're excited and we're anticipating our test scores that'll come out in September. Now, we always have lots of test scores. I mean, it's, you know, that, those are going to be your state test scores. That's going to be your CAC prep for the elementary and middle school and your end of course assessment for the high school. And it's also going to be for your riding on demand at the high school. Now, there's other factors that play into that as you go up and we'll, we'll have a meeting on that and we'll explain all those things. So we're excited about that. We did a lot of things last year to prepare for that. One of the things that we did was we monitored the progress through our math assessment. And I'm excited to say that last year was the first year that our elementary schools ever used math and this year, we're going to add kindergarten. So our kindergarten teachers see the value in knowing where kids are and the skills that they'll need for the future. And some student focus items, just excited to- for the future. And some student focus items, just excited to say that we have children at our governor's scholar across the state of Kentucky. It's always a wonderful experience. We'll have them back here at the board office and we'll recognize them for their efforts. You, you're, every district is always very proud of the number of governor's scholars that we have and their accomplishments. National competitions, this is the time of the year where kids are traveling to national events. I know that one of our student workers here, Dylan Tungit, actually competed in the FBLA national competition. And they were very thankful for that opportunity. Several of our kids from the ATC participate as well. And we'll have those at a board meeting. We'll actually recognize those. But, you know, when you do that, it's, it's just, the traveling in and of itself is a learning opportunity for the children. So I'm glad that we have those opportunities. As I already mentioned, our athletic programs will be up and running. School will be starting within three weeks. We'll have lots of things going on. It's another opportunity for kids to participate and learn teamwork. If you'll remember, we talked about, we've talked about soft skills. And soft skills as much as about showing up on time, being able to talk to one another, being able to take direction. Athletics is a good opportunity for that, as is in our clubs and other organizations. So our enrichment programs, we have a very rich summer school programs going. I think Mr. Farmer would agree with that. He's worked very closely with the schools. There are different kinds of programs across our elementary schools and middle schools. And our high school actually has an enrichment program as, as well. And then summer reading, just one of the things, you know, it's always nice to hear is, is that kids are reading in the summer. And just a reminder, you know, how 20 minutes a day, parents could just start reminding their kids that if you just read to your child 20 minutes a day. Now, that gets them in that mindset. And, you know, that does not have to begin for a child at school age. 20 minutes a day from birth is very important. And just, I, I know good news item, and I may have mentioned it, but I'm going to mention it again. Lebanon Elementary sent books home with every single child. Every single child went home with five to six books. And they're their books. And they get to keep those books, read those books. They sent them home with a journal as well. And the kids are to read the books, write in the journal. And when they come back, I think Ms. Royce has agreed to do the Cold Water Challenge. So I think the kids are pretty excited about that. But that's very exciting to know that kids have an opportunity to read books. And I know that Lebanon Elementary, as well as all the schools, did, did a really big emphasis. But, you know, that's just one of those things that you, you really don't ever hear of schools sending home that, those kinds of books. And just think about for the children who have multiple siblings in the house. They could have six, 12, 18 books. And, you know, those books can be passed around and borrowed. So I just think that's a very good news item.